That makes me even more concerned about some of the things that have not been put out there for the public, maybe longer than that is, and that has to do with the internal audit that was done at the Elections Office. There is information there that we need to know as citizens and taxpayers. I received one response from my FOIA request. I didn't have my Commissioner responding to me and whether the Commissioners actually answered my call. I knew that the Attorney was giving the information, so I was hoping to hear something from him. But I did hear that the information that we need to complete our concerns, answering our concerns, requires a subpoena. I was given a two-page document that was an audit in the U.S., an audit, and didn't answer any questions for me. So, I, as elected officials, I would ask you to take everything that is brought to you concerning elections with serious consideration. I understand that that is not your sole responsibility. It is the responsibility of the Commission, the Election Commission, which hasn't met in years and needs to be met, needs to be on a regular basis. I see that there is a big rush to hire someone. I think that that needs to be vetted, and you need to give some of the people an opportunity to speak into that, sir Judge Mitchell, because you are in a kind of bad condition, and I think that it needs to be open to the people, to the public, to speak into that. And I'm disappointed that we have to have a subpoena to get the information that we need. Thank you.
Good morning, the Honorable Judge Root. I had not intended to address the issue that Ms. Trumbull brought forward to the Court this morning, but I too sent a letter, an email, to the Commission, Judge Mitchell, Donald Williams, Rita Verstappen, Charlie Donis, and Darnell Lopez, who are members of that Commission, who are responsible for the oversight of the Elections Administration Office, the Elections Administrator, and as Ms. Trumbull stated, that Commission has not met in years. So, I don't understand exactly what the oversight is happening, because we now have an issue that has been brought forward to this Court, to the Commission, to your county attorney, and to the Commissioners, and a subpoena, I'm curious, that must mean there's an active investigation, is there an active investigation that would require a member from the public to have subpoena to request that evaluation? I'm just a little confused, what is the process for this Court to address concerns that are brought forward to you when there is an issue in this courthouse with your employees? I know many times the Court likes to say, "Well, they're under the purview of the Department Inn." The Department Inn is elected by the people, answers to the people, and no one else. The employees of that department answer to the Uvalde County Commissioners, who should have the responsibility of having input into what happens in those offices. And so, I'm very confused, I'm very concerned. I also wanted, I wasn't going to address the certificates of obligation today, but I'll have to do that at another time. The only thing I'm going to say about that is, you allocated almost $5,000,000 dollars to purchase used vehicles or whatever, or constables. After the meeting, Commissioner broadcast sent me a text that said, "There was a requirement in the coming year under HB 3253." I looked up that legislation, and it is currently on May 13, it was placed on the general state calendar, meaning it's an emergency, it's not a priority, it may or may not come to the floor, but it is not yet law. And even if it were, it does not require this Court to purchase vehicles for your constables. It is something that you can do, but it's not necessary that you do so. These constables make a lot of money. Mr. Drifler earns $43,000 in the county, and does private security for a private company, D.O.P. Mr. McCutcheon is at $138,000, Mr. Cook, $43,000 plus whatever else he does, Mr. Meyer, $120,000, and Mr. Samora, $62,000 from the county, plus his full-time job at college.
Thank God for letting me speak again today. I just wanted to do my last try. I was given the final budget, or copied the final budget, and the law overdue, and requested, and made pretty much races for my staff just to get up to the minimum of other departments are making, is not even in there, not pending. So, that blows my mind, because I just don't understand why the staff takes care of so many things for the county, which I know all departments do their job, like my office also does a very good job, and they sort of repaid just like other people. So, I know you have the budget in front of you, I'm going to ask that you vote against the budget until they correct this much issue. So, that's all that I have. Please pray about it, do the right thing, stand up for what's right, and if it's races, I followed the rules, I did it right, I came before y'all, I didn't backdoor anything, and I really mean these races, so for my staff, not for me. So, please take that into consideration. Thank you.
I conclude our speakers for this morning. Number two will go down to three, let's consider an act upon approval of minutes. We have to report you the minutes of August 11th for consideration. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Gargen, Mr. Cogan, discussion on the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Number four is to consider an act upon approval of office space leases with the county attorney, JP two, JP three, the Elections Office. Three of these are renewals, and one of them is a new lease. The lease for the county attorney is a renewal. The lease for JP two is a renewal. The lease for the Elections Office is a renewal. The one from JP three, to Topia, is a new contract proposed, as it's basically moved across from Topia to a building on that chain. Are there any questions about these leases?
Should I have to comment on one?
Yes, county attorney?
Yes. You can raise this, all the others are with the county, between the county and the landlord, and this other one is between landlord and tenant, I think it all is between the counties. Aye or no?
Aye. Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve? We have to put that check. Mr. Gargen, second. Mr. Cogan, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Number five, a specific act upon the order set to establish the county auditor, assistant auditor, and court reporter. The district judge has issued an order to reappoint the auditor, the assistant auditor, and the court reporter. The order also sets the salaries for those individuals. The Commissioners Court needs to accept the order and to vouch for the Minnesota. Question about the order, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Gargen, is there a second? Mr. Gargen, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Number six is to consider an act upon the work of the electric workday insurance attorney and solicitor. County advertised the order, seeing notice, the electrical workday insurance office, call this year. Samora got $200,000. Is there any difference?
Well, we just say, what a great job, Uvalde County does. In marketing and tracking the procurement of services and goods from Uvalde County and its citizens. Uvalde County has a bid tracking system that every item that is procured has a bid number that the request is published in Uvalde Leader News, last, and also posted on Uvalde County website. So, I want to congratulate Uvalde County on that process. You may recall, we made the Commissioners Court previously on the Uvalde County Sheriff's Department Training Facility, being consulted after a nominee owned by Uvalde County, next to Uvalde County two. We made the Commissioners Court previously and discussed and approved this act for that building. We also made the Commissioners Court for the procurement of the pre-occupied metal building. We also made the Commissioners Court previously on the bid award for the direction of that metal building. So, all those items are complete. So, now we're here today to discuss and consider the electrical, the electric. So, the electrical was published in Uvalde Leader News, on August 12, and August 10, and also published on the Uvalde County website. Uvalde County conducted a bid open on August 18, 2025, for the electrical. The electrical size of all wiring and all the components and all the time due, and everything that's involved, the lighting electricity, too, in that building. Uvalde County, they see one bid. That was from Jeremia Electric Service, they are a hometown business. Their place in it was $50,767. They would give a credit back of $300 if there was three day backs out there that would decide at the end of the day if it was actually bid. It'd be my recommendation that the Commissioners Court consider this award. This will be funded with our money, set aside during this current fiscal year, for both this one and the next one we're going to talk about. So, it'd be no additional cost to the county to fund it from the American, if it's a kind of. We don't expect any invoicing or any suspension by the exonerate on this component until probably the end of the fiscal year, or whatever it may be. Randy, do you have anything to add?
That's your recommendation, Jeremia. You've heard the recommendation, exclamation, bid, which we mostly accept. Mr. Gargen, is there a second? Mr. Yeho, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Before we go down to seven, I'm going to skip you on four and five of your comments.
Yes.
Did you want to make some comments?
May I, please?
Sure. I'll follow that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, Honorable Judge Root, I'm not going to comment on number four, I think, of ours. I won't make a comment on the auditor salaries. I understand that it is the district judge's purview, through legislation to set those salaries, the Court's duty is only to set them, so I understand it's outside of your control, so to speak. I was curious, however, about the $12,500 stipend that is part of that resolution that is put before the Court regarding one of these assistant auditors. I do not believe that that particular amount of money, or that particular money, if it's not auditor's salary, so to speak, it's in addition to the salary, that it is within the control of the county, and so I'm concerned that it's included in the resolution, because it's not the judge's purview to set that stipend, I believe in the courts. And I'm curious as to how the Court makes a decision on who gets those stipends, and is it based on experience, qualifications, who has the least amount of work to do, and can take that off? I don't know how it's done, but again, this is within the district judge's purview to allocate those dollars, or is it the courts? And you don't have an answer right now, but somebody can give it.
All right, we'll go down to seven, and that's to consider an act upon the fourth, the best of the air conditioning workday insurance office, so.
Thank you, Judge. Again, just to reiterate that hearing process with the heating ventilation and air conditioning, again, this, for period, was advertised in Uvalde Leader News, on August 12, and August 10, is also posted on the Uvalde County website. Certainly has opportunity, probably has opportunity to be on the website and actually see those things, and they're available. Bid open was to double on August 18, the Canadian, full-term down serve on the first quarter. Uvalde County receives heating ventilation and air conditioning, the two thousand and half thousand units, ductwork, everything is buying, real, free online, everything is buying, make that facility, heating ventilation and air conditioning. Does Uvalde County receive one of those? That was from Nix, Congratulations. Again, Congratulations, One Town Goods. Their vehicles are $50,000, $820,000, 3D, everything is involved, leading, this is a $225,000 bid. And again, this bid will be funded with the American, we have that, we have our recommendation.
You've heard the recommendation, the management. Anything you want to add?
No, sir, young man. Okay. You've heard the explanation and recommendation on the Air conditioning workday insurance office, training facility, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Gargen, is there a second? Mr. Cogan, discussion.
Just a quick question, I am curious, I'm surprised how few bidders we have in local and, is that a matter of just knowing the other bidders don't possess, that require a license and bonded, or any idea whether we have more participation rights, or other local air conditions? I'm just curious.
Those are just ones that responded. They went out.
No, no, I don't have a question, I'm just curious if you have any insights.
That's the only measure that you can always respond. Any other question? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Number eight is considered active on a resolution supporting Texas Department Act of 2026, Home Delivery Mail Program, call this.
The Commissioners, does it have a new, creative, handling, same agency that's on the highway project? This application process opens up on September 1st, 2026, or 2025, has the deadline of November 1st, which is going to be July 1st, and do our preliminary process to begin the application to enhance the home delivery bill program in Uvalde County. I cannot compliment Uvalde County enough on the home delivery bill program. They deliver somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000 a year annually. That is tremendous impact, I want to hear. At the end of the day, the application has potential of funding home delivery deals that events of anybody in Uvalde County, if they're on this way, being sued, handed device to Uvalde County. The area vacancy on the Bayesian, the eyes of certain amounts, definitely amounts towards Uvalde County, or help you to assist, but it's only big review, so this application process is estimated to carry value to Uvalde County, and provide additional funding to Uvalde County. Uvalde County receives $21,000 in, in the past, and so, the dividend numbers, submit application, and hopes to enhance Uvalde County's efforts. And then, Uvalde County delivers enough for a minimum payment to residents, hometown residents in Uvalde County, so. Thank you, Commissioners Court, for your support.
Question to call? Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Mr. Gargen, is there a second? Mr. Cogan, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Number nine, to do an act for authorization, advertise farm, a counted by mass notification system. Mercy Man, Director, whatever, Park Damson is here to take different.
Before he is, absent the events in the Gulf Country, curving along those areas of mass notification systems, to warn and alert citizens and visitors and responders within Uvalde County, been looking at this for over a year, to try to determine, discover, compensate. Was involved with this about 20 years ago, I was special coordinator of the Middle Region Area, we had a region wide notification system that we paid for, had a compromise for the entire region at that time, and this type of technology was pretty much in a conceited degree. That did not stick, because of the work required locally, of the management of data base systems, all of them. That's no longer the case, 20 years later. So, this type of mass notification system, we're looking at, it uses not only cell phones, but also the Noah, other system, radio system, that can receive, we have weather radios and other things, to work with. This system would provide for the ability, if a, this whole representation of Uvalde County was playing, and you wanted to designate city, cell phone, companion city, Uvalde, you'd have that ability to georegulate, defensive capability, that would grab every phone hand that you're ready to, that you select, to be notified. So, you have control over where that message goes. We would designate a small group to handle that messaging. We don't want a lot of access to that, because a long message can give as much damage as no message at all. So, this would give us the ability, incidents, whether, whatever you wanted to notify the visitors and our citizens, but this would provide for that. Proposes, planning events, untrained vets, and in the potential to disaster. And again, with the market for the social, using the iPods network, which is the Noah federal weather, it's an integrated public awareness warning system, that's at no cost. You do have to do a monthly test script with them, which is fine. I would request for some that could do to run this out in North Stop Mission Center. Anyone that can designate would have access to it, whether you want that leadership to be, whether it be Park Chief, Chief of Police, Sheriff, Mayor, Judge, whoever, would inform that messaging to what is needed at the time you broadcast that out. It would use social media, text, voice and email, as well as the Noah system to generate that, but that would be my request.
Question to call? Do you have any work with this, and it's going out, did you have any?
Our research has indicated, Commissioner, that we'd be looking at $2,000 a year, the cost of building down on this type of technology. Before, the kicker on these was after a certain number of messages, we would be charged for that situation. That is no longer the case. We have an estimated population of 25,100 for 2025, and our boundary is for 2,300, so it's worth, but we don't see that cost to service, so again, my look is to carry that under the EFC question for next year, to manage the cost of that, we don't see a cost for that.
Which is service that we will subscribe to, it's not really hardware that we have to buy.
Right, it's a software driven, uh, application.
Do you reimburse them for the state, this environment, or is it right now?
I, I think so, I, we have to go out for bid, and I'll see if that reimbursement level will be there, but I certainly see that as a valid point, and to see what the state is going to do, we don't know yet what that is, it hasn't come down, uh, for the year, that is kind of off the dill, which I will be confirming with the Court and something later down, but I hope this will be part of, I assume it will be, for this kind of.
And this is not a subscriber, it's an opt-in system judge, which means you may or may not, I mean, no of those, though, I think most of that is pretty much automatic, something that will let you get the mafia, basically, I have to go.
Are we meant to do this, or we just need to let?
I'm sorry, I've stayed with this in about a year or so, just started looking into this, and something that I feel that is needed, technology changes, with just the social climate, is needed, I think, to be aware of what's going on. I think this is the most logical tool to do that, and I think being interactive is better than trying to react to it.
The additional question? Is there a motion to approve the request? Mr. Cogan, is there a second? Mr. Yeho, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. I'm going to consider an act upon adoption of the Texas Department of Vehicle, Auction of Vehicle Fee, Rita Verstappen, Texas says a aye.
Good morning, Honorable Judge Dean. This is a fee that's in accordance with the Texas Transportation Code 502, Code 42, to compensate local fees, it's a $10 fee for County Road and Bridge, and this money is to be used for improvements of roads and construction of new roads. As to the child safety, I do not recommend an increase in fees this time, so this fee will stay the same. This is an annual fee.
You're recommending no change?
No change.
Question to read. Is there a motion? Mr. Gargen, is there a second? Mr. Cogan, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
I oppose, most carries.
Thank you.
I remember the leviness for sit back on authorization to advertise for our E O C warehouse building at the two oh seven South City location.
With the ongoing build out of our new E O C facility, the ground will be captured by that building. Takes away the current open warehouse that we got back at the E O C. And in order to protect our command drivers, all of our other assets, we would need to build another warehouse on the property to do that. There would now be light detectors, cops, all those elements that need to be in secure locations, whether they're available and accessible. And also store our response drivers, our mischievous traders. And that would be paid out of my operational budget and or also the E O C grant budget for that facility. We would do this, not with necessary three phases, but broken down by materials, concrete, and then the actual certification of the building. We would do electrical a little later day. It will not be a whole lot other than just mining and offense. And that's not the immediate priority. We look at this auctioning written out, diagnosed out about two thousand square feet for the full plan.
Question to court. This project will be funded by the modern modern population building in the E O C federally funded membership. Another question. Is your motion to the grid? I think motion to the grid would be a special order. Mr. Marcus is your second. Second, Mr. Marcus, discussion. All the members say aye. I oppose, most carries. I remember twelve, it's considered act on acceptance of the thirty initial district supervision correction. Big companies require to provide the commission board annually for your budget. Board is not required to approve it, except in the main office. But in the ministry board, we have that for you. Mr. Marcus, third. Mr. Yegel, discussion. I said, I'm your second. Mr. Marcus, discussion. All the members say aye. I oppose, most carries. I remember thirteen, it's considered act on presentation with no new revenue tax rate.
Good morning. So, so the chair, the judge and I are reading you through the new tax rate process. The minutes to complexion, taxation calendar was given to you and other costs of media with this weekend. A lot of media, a lot of corporate, make it more convenient. It's pretty repetitive. But actually, in the city, you're required first to present the non-maturely tax rate, which is a statute totally calculated tax rate. It is not one that you can base on anything you want to buy or anything you want to do or anything you want to reduce. It is based kind of medically on the good for the buyer. There's that one. The, I don't know what you want to word. The non-maturely tax rate for this year was point five four four nine six one per hundred dollar valuation. This, this tax rate would impose the same kind of taxes as last year if you compare profit taxes in both years. That's what this tax rate does. We used to call it, get that the tax rate, if you remember. And in this case, it is set in stone by amendment of software calculations. However, it needs to be announced publicly, which is hard to do this thing. This is also already been on your website along with every other document related to true complexion since we began classes. To, I think it's better for me to go forward with the next one before I bring in some subtle information. So this is not something to adopt. This is something to receive. I guess adopt is appropriate, but it's a statute.
So you've been presented the no new revenue tax rate explanation by the county. All of your questions. Is this accepted? Is your motion? Mr. Yegel, is your second. Mr. Marcus, discussion. All the members say aye. I oppose, most carries. I remember fourteen, it's considered act on presentation with a total approval tax rate.
In similar fashion, the A A D R approval tax rate is the tax rate at which an entity may adopt, but may not go over without a hundred. And in the old days, it's called a. The voter approval tax rate for this year was point six one three nine eight nine hundred dollar value. Again, that voter approval tax rate is set by the calculation set by legislature. And although we may equal it, we may not go over it. I recommend approval.
Part explanation. Question to the court.
I have just one question, commissioner. So now let's say that Uvalde County has received their property tax. Is it the same as last year or is there an increase in taxes?
Yes, there would be an increase in taxes. Maybe that can go a little further. They, the counties now, basically, yeah, we just have a late tax. And then, um, five or six years ago, they changed it to a three point five percent tax. The tax rate that we're going to be voting, proposed tax rate at the next meeting, which is September eighth, I would be recommending the rate. And that is the equal to the A A D R. Saying that, and I can go a little further in my next speech, but next week, but or next meeting. Saying that, the increase is thirty point six one percent or forty dollars and eighty six cents, forty dollars and eighty cents on a hundred thousand dollar. I would give it a more, or we would propose tax rate versus gas, first. Now, of course, I'm sorry. Now, if you notice on your calendar, we leave it today post the salaries of the officials and their, uh, so my assistant is doing that as I am now discussing it with you. And it is the third draft is being presented. So by the time the meeting's over, that will be on the website. In addition, each elected and or appointed official, and I can appoint it, it will only indicate as elected, should receive a notice of what their salaries are to be proposed to be and what their expenses are being proposed to be at this rate. Those went out yesterday by P D F and as a courtesy, I just sent all of them home. It's easier on P D F to do it that way. It's a road. But I feel it's helpful to elected officials to see. That also is already posted to your website. The next thing that has to be discussed is the presentation of the third draft. Now, I'm sorry. One of those, I'm sorry.
Any other questions regarding voter approval tax?
Well, I'll just take one for a second. I remember fifteen years ago, the rate was about one five seven. I think it made the most we'd ever been or somewhere close to. And it reached as high as one seven two. Over the last four or five years, any longer, we've been rolling that back consistently every time. This will be the first time that we've got up again ever so slightly because of the large scale investment we need to make.
You're asking for that service from the right. Let's see what you guys. And that's included in the E O C. That is included in the, it's included in everything. But we had brought that down and then when the court decided on the structure items that we needed, that we didn't want to include in a greater property tax rate with the gap mechanism. We put in that service so that you can be, kind of buy new cars, you can pay that over here.
Any other question to the court? Is your motion to accept voter approval tax? Mr. Yegel, is your second. I said, Mr. Marcus, discussion. All the members say aye. I oppose, most carries. I remember fifteen, it's considered act on presentation two thousand twenty five, two thousand seventy six, final budget.
Before you is the next, the last step to adopting your budget as presented by the attorney general by the office. To assist with the review. Each of you have been presented the full salary renewed up today thanks to my sister for and the county manager. Payroll for everyone, including elected officials with the code that's in this budget. So you have exact numbers for the proposed salary. We have been more proud of developing this. I would say larger than most of the heat because the infrastructure was going to be more sophisticated. It will now be exceedingly, at least once a month. And so every time there's a change, if you're interested, it will be made available and if not, it will just happen. The other thing in this budget is, you could call the thirty eighth judicial district. During this last few weeks, the thirty eighth judicial district consists of Real and Uvalde County. That district consists of the district attorney and the district judge. Their expenses and their staff severance. According to statute, the percentages paid by the members of the district are based on population. Uvalde County pays eighty nine percent of this budget and Real County pays eleven percent of this budget. For your benefit, you'll notice on the first page it tells you, here's how you should pay this amount, twelve thousand dollars, eleven thousand nine hundred ninety seven, which offsets some of the expenses or eleven percent of the expenses you see in the district attorney's budget and in the district, I'm sorry, the district judge's budget. These are, the only thing you don't see because of the V I line is they also pay on the health insurance. We just did not include that sheet because of the regular payments. So this, which Real County needed for their court to have a new board of corporate payers is probably busy yelling. I'm going to be putting that revenue, which is not a large amount of revenue. However, I will also be putting in any possible revenue to certifications that come in prior to the final adoption, which is on September eighth. So the judge will call a public hearing that has already been published twice. We did once this for extra. We can be adopting the actual salary fund at which we have a draft. We will be adopting the budget by record code. And then we will be, I say we, court will be adopting the proposed tax rate and set that tax rate with public hearing, which is, as you can see, set for September twenty seventh. Public hearing and then the adoption. And then, my foreman, the debt service, I would like to make a comment and thank every official and commissioner. The debt service will say, as you know, justice was a long process. There are a lot of things needed. And although we never thought we would do another one, here we are. I don't know if we'll do another one or not. So thank you for working with us on that and for, and each of the departments for being so helpful.
We do have three figures on the I remember fifteen and Roy has given them.
Do I say yours?
Good morning. I've come today to ask that I see that I do not vote to see twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six final budget. And that is speaking for myself and I'm speaking for Uvalde County and for the county office. As you all know, that I transferred from the department and I'm telling for us to, to our office. I'm for equal twenty twenty five and my pay, my mistake, about ten thousand dollars down. My duties went from less work to more work. Sorry, less work to pay and more work to be discussed. Or do you think we're actually a company and the businesses outside of the department and other departments are going to be professional and legal wing? Our duties do no justice, look pay that we honestly deserve and object. So again, the last one that you take on it and do not vote the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget are from her, offered twenty five percent of her pay and still nothing. You want to take another one?
The women's.
Good morning, Judge Mitchell, commissioners. You've heard from me before. So I've just been here today as a tax basis and we've come to ask you not to vote to approve this final draft. Please table it. There's a lot of single thing in that. We would like to grab that addresses what the county clerk is asked for. And we spoke with each of you without limitations. So please take this man today, do not vote to approve this budget. Thank you.
P D F.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Donna Elliott, but I go by P D as a deputy county clerk. I came to Uvalde County as an employee of the county clerk's office in twenty twenty three after reconnecting with and marrying my high school sweetheart. He relocated to this area to live closer to his father. He relocated to this area to live closer to his father and is now himself declining both mentally and physically. I took a significant cut in pay upon accepting my current position coming from Galveston County with the hope that through hard work, time, and merit, that the salary would increase as earned. My husband is disabled and unable to draw from social security until he's fifty-nine and a half. We live very frugal lives. And I've had to borrow money from my Galveston County A U L retirement bi-weekly at steep tax penalties just to meet the basic needs of our household. I would like one day be able to have a salary where, as the sole breadwinner in my household, we do not qualify for state assistance. I hopefully ask for, on behalf of myself, my spouse, and my fellow deputy and compliance clerks in the Uvalde County Clerk's office, to reject the 2025, 2026 Uvalde County budget until the salaries for the county clerk's office are increased to a livable wage commensurate with responsibilities and invaluable service to the public that the positions have earned. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, you've heard the presentation, I have a question. There's no action on the presentation, say others disagree. Except the fact that the other drafts present. They will vote on it next meeting. There's no action to take. I'm sorry. You don't hear from him. I didn't say you don't hear. I said two, four, and five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's two, four, and five from here.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm on the other room. I wanted to also ask the court. I know this point when you applied for the S B twenty-two funds a year or so ago, you did not apply your funds to the constables, which I find very interesting given the fact that now you're borrowing money to purchase vehicles. Just very interesting why you missed that opportunity. I'm also here to address the court regarding the county clerk's request. It is very discouraging to me as an individual, as a taxpayer, that a county clerk or elected official who earned that spot in the vote of the citizens of this county might not be able to twenty-five percent of her salary just so that her employees can have a lower wage. It's really quite unconscionable that this court would let this issue go to that level. I also admire that that three of your employees, Uvalde County employees and clerk employees, have had the courage today to come before you, to plead with you, to not only not approve the presented final budget. If I'm understanding you all correctly, it sounds like there are consequences for work being done on payroll. And so whatever needs to be done for this court to have before them wages that these individuals can actually live on and deserve and would be presented to you before you approve the final budget. And it's very deserving. So many other employees, every county and every department, comparable levels of responsibility on a pressure, about workload, may consider, consider it be more money than they do. And I don't understand why. Well, I think one of the arguments is that because there is a turnover, as often in those offices, people can step into very significant salaries. I'll take the offerer's office, for example. They have nobody where they're going to offer a new employee. I have no idea what the qualifications are. Does she bring a lot of experience with her or him? Three thousand dollars? Just stepping into a new job, new employee. How does that work? When you get individuals with experience, some longevity, and commitment to this county, you're making so much less. Thank you.
Alsha.
Thank you, Judge Mitchell. The questions presented by several people are all extremely valid when you don't understand the context. I appreciate and acknowledge that they can be very confusing. I'll start with the fact that the position that Andrea left for thirty-six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars up her on the court and went to a lower-paying job has been filled by a candidate with a bachelor's degree in entomology from the University of Texas. That does not break Andrea. However, any office can bring someone in at the same amount a person who's in that position is making. We made that agreement probably five years ago in the budget workshops where the elected officials could, if someone left at a higher-paying position, could take the salary from that position and apportion it to other positions and then bring in someone at the entry-level rate, which at this point in time is twenty-five thousand. I recently had a person want to lower their new entry-level person below twenty-five. And the treasurer and I, after conversations with the judge, have not allowed that to go on because it puts too big in this pregnancy. However, the, the officials sometimes put the next official between a rock and a hard place. I have departments with people who handle much more sophisticated work than mine. And there is a difference in the intelligence required to do some jobs and the skill sets required to do others. And that's the way the world operates. I'm not the rocket scientist. My kid is, but I'm not. So I don't deserve to employ next. The district attorney's investigator, um, her assistant DAs, her DAs, the county treasurers, people, the tax assessors, people who she has not filled, but who took advantage of the ability to leverage a vacated place's salary and bring in a new person at a different rate, are quite valid and fall under our guidelines. The, uh, and, and this is budget and there's a lot more in the budget. Brandon could probably speak to this better than me, but I'll explain to constables. Last year, Senate Bill twenty-two was brand new. In fact, we didn't even put it in the budget. We amended it into the budget because we were already halfway through. The court could not fund the constables because every constable on their report did not fulfill the necessary, uh, job responsibilities. And I'm here to correct me, stops for, at this traffic stop. And so therefore, the court could not use them at that time. It's that way again this year. And Senate Bill twenty-two, we have not gotten the DA, the prosecutors are both working to get the new one done. It's not going to be in this new budget. It's going to be just like last year. It's going to be in the October amendments. It's unfortunate that the legislature has other things it's processing besides Senate Bill twenty-two. As a judge and the treasurer and I look, and, and, and the other officials involved in the debt service, look at this. The constables, I think a comment was made about the funds being spent for constables and county-owned vehicles. And if you, uh, and it's supposed to be a pickup, if I'm not correct, because all of my constables generally, generally are in unincorporated areas. I was against that, okay? I just want you to know, I was against that. It took them a hard time to convince me until I realized I was putting gas in somebody's wife's car who may already not only be doing constable work, which is legal. Or I was putting tires on their vehicles, but their wife or the vehicle, or the kid or the vehicle. There's nothing wrong with that. It's perfectly legal, but why not? Could a law enforcement person in a county-owned vehicle that ultimately, if that person has wrecked their personal vehicle and kills himself and three other people, we're still going to go to the court? This way, it's already on our insurance. That is what convinced me to, to visit with the judge and to visit with Brandon and go, okay, what, what do they think about that? Now, there's a little more constraint on their vehicles. They have strict guidelines regarding the outside and the precinct number. But there is a reason behind that and it was more than just the judge and I. It was conversations with constables. And the debt service purchase now will prevent one of you from putting tires on somebody's car. And if they end up not making it the next time, they still got the tires. And there they are. So there's that one small item. There's, there's so many things. The one thing I did forget right now, if you'll look when you get a chance, Fund Forty-two has been built in your, in this draft. Fund Forty-two won't be active until October one. It is a construction fund for the debt service. Mr. Esser is going to be our construction manager at risk. He's already approved that. Mr. Esser now has his budget guidelines. And the treasurer will be receiving the money, um, August twenty-eighth. There's some accounting entries that don't have to be made with the cost of his shoes and stuff like that. They're already in there except, and everyone has to stay within their budget just to help with that, as you said. Other than those particular items, I think there has never been in the thirty-four years I've been here, a time when I have stood up and said, my staff's not getting an increase, so you should be there. We don't do business that way. Senate Bill twenty-two is for prosecutors and law enforcement. So should I vote against Senate Bill twenty-two? I think so. It, as far as the, and, and the one, this isn't personal, but directed in one comment. The stipend paid to the assistant auditor who handles all the Zoom meetings, handles all the small miscellaneous IT problems, does all the scheduling for the managed services IT group. Also does a lot of grant work with the district attorney, the chief deputy, and the T R C. Is this stipend? Since that seems to be a concern, I promise you next year will be salary and it'll be higher. So thank you for giving me opportunities and I appreciate it. And I'm happy to answer any questions anytime. Thank you.
And that is the presentation of the final draft. It will be voted on in our next meeting on September eighth. We'll go down to sixteen, unless we consider acting on the motion to the court. P D.
My judge, my board. Apologize to the court for being in a hurry today. Oh, this is a report that comes from office seven, office twenty. We've been lighting rubber on County Road three twenty-three, three twenty-four, three thirty-seven, three thirty-eight, three thirty-nine, and four oh eight. Fit patch hot loads on four oh two and four twenty-eight. Fit brush on two oh one, two oh seven. And a fit grass on one oh five, three seventy-three, three seventy-four, three seventy-five, four hundred. Removed equipment from four oh eight, four oh twelve, four thirteen, and removed it up to four sixteen at this time. Fit back over on Freedom, on Struckin, uh, Library Review on County Roads, three seventy-three, three seventy-four, and four ten. Replaced the high-speed batteries in the blinking lights at the four-way stop in, uh, United States. Cleaned and frame over grumbees around both sides of the United States. Fixed two boats and humpbees on County Road four thirteen, one was plum. Mistake the plum out, to rebuild the whole lane. Built a pad around the E O C, uh, tenant tower and toll rail located in the county yards. Offered an extensive amount of material to County Road four oh eight, four ten, and four sixteen. Plated road cross, bridge crossings on County Road four oh eight, four ten, and four sixteen. And inflated, uh, bridge crossings on County Road four oh eight, four ten. Bridge crossings prepared to continue on four sixteen until finished. And the county has been included in the presidential executive declaration, which should provide some relief to the cost of the repair needs. A monitor should provide a, and clear it up and down. Any questions?
You've heard the report, the motion to the court. Any questions?
So we're promising expensive works to avoid it.
Paid it.
Do we get a hundred percent back? That's what it was saying?
I'm not sure.
We don't get a hundred percent.
Probably a seven, five, or five, four.
You know, maybe two years before we see that.
It was like a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
But, I don't think anyone's qualified.
Move that back.
When we did, um...
Any other questions coming? Should we accept the motion to the court?
Certainly.
Mr. Abell, is there a second? For those who can prepare. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries, thank you. I'm from seventeen, considering acting on. A lot of voter amendments we have, and I'm disappointed. Number eighteen is considered. Motion, remember. What, Alice? What is this?
Oh, the agenda.
Alice?
Oh, the agenda. My bad.
Do we have a budget amendment, Court?
I think it was an eighty-dollar change. Um, we added a person to the district attorney's.
Say that again. Explain it again.
We added a person to the district judges. No, yes, I would think we had said it. Okay.
Okay.
I thought it's going to be on the next meeting. And the judge was saying that it would be eighty dollars.
Eighty dollars. Are there any more budget amendments? Of eighty dollars? Questions about, just for the recommendations, your motion to approve?
Just eighty dollars.
Eighty dollars. Mr. Abell? My commission, Abell, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Larson, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Eighteen, considering acting on political reports. We've got an opportunity to repeat the reports. I have a motion, my commissioner. Pritchard, is there a second? Repeat the reports. Here are no secondary, further reports. Motion fails. We go down to eighteen, considering acting on payment bills. Is your motion to approve?
I'm having a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Hope, the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. I'm number nineteen, or if I failed that one. Number twenty, considering acting on further listening and confirmation. And we close today. I'd like to do so. Had to be closed today, I'd like to do so in memory of my third. What are any others?
Trump, Steele.
Ralph Steele.
Lorenzo Martinez.
Lorenzo Martinez. Any other? If not, uh, that puts this agenda in this meeting, chance to...